All right. We'll call to order the regular meeting for the Board of Alderman for Monday, July 15, 2019. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Present.
Alderwoman Cotto. Alderman Dijo Van Carlo. Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomo.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujain.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum, and just for the record, Alderman Dijo Van Carlo is on vacation. He'll be returning this week. And Alderwoman Cotto should be here. She's just running a few minutes late. With that, the first item on our agenda this evening is public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board can sign up with Mr. Conway, the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. There's a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up, Mr. Sheriff, if you call the first speaker.
First speaker tonight for me, Cornelius Avenue, Michael Muticharo.
You always bring my laundry. That's not true, but... My name is Mike Muticharo. I live at 8 Cornelius Avenue in Waterbury, Connecticut. I am the litter control and beautification commissioner, and I'm also involved with the Hopeful Neighborhood Association. I'm an officer of the club. Basically, what I'm here tonight for is, when you think of litter, what do you think of? Trash, papers, buildings needing to be maintained, high grass, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Do you ever think of posters on poles as litter? Well, let me tell you. They sit there for weeks, months, and sometimes years, with all kinds of weather, rain, wind, and nobody touches them. We want to change the city's image. We're hiring a company to help to change the city's image. It all starts here. When people drive through Waterbury and they see posters and on all kinds of poles, they say, "What's going on here? It's a dirty city." So, you know, we should do something about it. And basically, I've done that myself. This past week, I took out 98 posters just from Baldum Street and South Main Street. And Sunday morning at 7:00, I went at the corner of West Main Street, Metal Street, Willow Street, where 7-Eleven stores is. I was going to start there and go all the way up to Sacred Heart because there's posters almost on every pole. Disgraceful. And we're not doing anything about it. But I had a bad start because the poles under 7-Eleven, there was so many posters on there. I had a scissors, and I couldn't cut through. Tell them you're going to give them a fine or whatever you have to do. So that's my plea, and I'm not finished trying to clean up the poles and the city. I'm here to help, and I'll volunteer whoever you get involved with to help this matter as well. And I just want to show you the poles. This is just on set. This is picture of the back. There's ninety meters just in this back. Okay? And the vent is in bridge port, not water, not even water. So, you know, we should do something about it. And these are the good ones because I took them off other poles and they were destroyed in half and things like that. And they tape them on the poles as well. They don't just staple them on the poles. The metal poles, they tape them, and that's hard to get off. I use the scissors, and we get them off. But we have to do something about it to clean up the city, and I guess I'm going to put this in the dumpster when I get home. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 12 Devonwood Drive, Jonathan Torres.
Hello. My name is Jonathan Torres. I own a house at 12 Devonwood Drive in the Robinwood area. These recent rainfall that we've had have caused some damage to my house. I had water literally pouring outside my foundation. Very little water got into my house, which just tells me that some erosion going on. The water actually created a river that went from the woods in my backyard and went all the way down to the road. I had water coming out of my driveway, which scared me because I thought it was a water main. I'm not sure exactly what's going on up there. I've only owned the house since last September, and I love the house. But it's heartbreaking to see our dream coming out and being literally washed away, little rubble all the time. As I cut my yard, I'm also noticing the retaining wall with more cracks than what it was when we did our inspection just last year. Now, over time, I can understand where cement settles, sands move. I get it. I've been all over the United States, and I've seen foundations do weird things. But this is definitely water damage. I took a video of it. I had to ask my neighbor. My neighbor was gracious enough to kind of inform me and guide me around the ways. And I can definitely tell you that one more rainfall like we had last time, I stand a chance of having a hole in my driveway. The house was built in 1956, and it stood up pretty well. When I did some little history, because I have a close relationship with the previous owners, they've never had this kind of water in their backyard before. So I'm not sure if there's a drain that's clogged, which we'll touch on in a second, or if something just got redirected. Speaking of drains being clogged, because of the recent rain shower, I have three drains in front of my house, all clogged. They didn't get cleaned until just recently, and thankfully, they did. We're just around the corner with freezing weathers, and that could cause an issue. Again, I have water main in front of my house. Enough water in there that settles in the dirt, and it's going to freeze, expand, and crack. So I have a concern with the driveway, the water main, and my foundation all at once. Not a very settling feeling my first year in homeownership. So, thank you.
Next speaker from 12 Mooreland Avenue, David Blatt.
Good evening. My name is David Blatt. I'm a homeowner, a pastor. Yeah, also, the recent rainfall that we've had, there's been a lot of water coming through all of our areas. Actually, one of my neighbors, he just had to dig up the whole yard and replace some pipe things up. Now, the water, the water that we've been dealing with, I own the house for 30 years, and we've been dealing with this for 30 years. There's been people up the road that actually had, in their basement, their berths were not stills, but they used to have water coming from the waste, and they just had to pump out. And the water's been coming through for that kind of years. With this recent rainfall, my whole backyard flooded. I dug a series of pipes to try to help it. There's actually a need for the house that everybody's supposed to maintain their home pipe, but it's only a small pipe, and it can't take all the water. But there's been so, so much water coming from the hill where we live, Maryland, Rockaway, down, there's like no drains on Rockaway, and no drains until you get all the way down to this main street, past anything to build. And this has been ongoing for years. Half of my yard, I was cutting gravel, this is long through, but I've lost some of the backyard, which is horrible. I dug that in March 23rd, 1990, bought the house. I had grass growing through, snowed green, because that's how much water was available. Slowed it down, helped it for years, but there's just, from what I was getting from people that used to live there, that there's underground road that runs right through all people's yards, and water, it's just terrible. And that's what I'm looking for today.
Next speaker from 286 Fieldwood Road, Michael Sandoval.
Evening. I started late on 286 Fieldwood Road, quite a day. Glad to be here. Boy, you know, the last couple weeks, the city's been partying. We had the summer solstice thing, we had A B music day, we had the event downtown here with the Jets fest. The city has been partying far, special, phenomenal. We are coming back. It's a great thing going on in the city. Loving what's going on here. One of the things I don't like is this new garbage thing. It's two hundred, I got off on it currently at right now. They want me to propose to go to 250. It's just going to hurt me. Say, uh, the guy, or say, uh, it's not leaving the blue bin at the curb, it's the tenant. If you might propose making 20 bucks, so he can, I can take that ticket, and I can get 20 tickets in by the end of the 100 bucks. He's going to take it, leave, and leave my place messy. At 250, he's going to destroy my place, and I still got to pay the 450 dollar thing. Let's try something different. Let's make it work. Let's make it so the guy that's in violation, I can take the ticket, hand the 450 dollar ticket, and you want him to take it? And he may not believe, and he may just believe not leaving the blue bin at the curb. Try something different. Little luck. At 250, he's going to destroy my place. I got to pay for the place, but my place will be down 3%, because I lose that grant. I still got to pay my taxes. I still got to pay all the stuff you guys, but you know, try and help the landlord, try and help a lot of houses, a lot of properties in this country, in Torrey, in Thompson, you know, it's got a lot of properties. But that 250 dollar thing, it's going to hurt. And we're the guys cleaning up the properties. We're making investments. Well, I did not own my house in this poor location. I brought a bad homeowner today, made a beautiful, put in some nice lawns and put in some drugs. I spent a lot of money. Don't worry. I understand it's 800,000, the landlord, I understand those guys in New York, they don't even care. You don't need the property, you're losing it. If you invest, you're going to have more properties than you're likely. Like, let's not create the properties. Let's try and help the landlord, help the tenant, and everybody fix something here. You know? Let's change the landlord, help the landlord. That's all. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 93 Mooreland Avenue, Dylan Lopez.
Hi. I'm a senior resident of the neighborhood of Muggs. About a year ago, we purchased a home, ladies and gentlemen. One day, they were going to close all of the hatchbacks in the backyard because we have sponsors who can find us a little bit. Unfortunately, we had to give it to the landlord. Same issue as my neighbors. We have water, I mean, this one is coming out, and everywhere in everything. I quote him, this, you know, and the lawn is, you know, he is in the backyard at 4:15 with the next door neighbors helping out, so he gets about in the bummer of that situation. We have skills, we have problems of money. Everywhere, there's times that people can't get out of it. It's probably because there's so much water. Either it's water, there's ice, there's so many different situations. And the reason why we purchased the home like I said was to try to rejoice. We can't even go in the backyard and, you know, do a backyard art or anything because it's different. You know, it's not safe for them because of the money. They can fall into any practices that we do. And if you don't know it, there's other people, you know, come to our house, like we literally fallen through their backyard as they're walking or they're in the yard. So we would greatly appreciate it, and we hope that, you know, we can be assisted with, you know, not myself, but we'd appreciate it, totally appreciate it, the fact that we just purchased the home, you know, it's only been a year, we've had so many issues with this water. Turns out that it's a not permanent situation. You know, there's a general that says 30 years, okay? Nothing has been taken care of. So I think that, you know, if somebody could come out, they'd look at the property and see what can be done, you know, they would be very different here. Thank you.
Next speaker from 17 Mooreland Avenue, Yara Stata.
Hello. My name is Yara Stata. I'm seven today, 11:00. I've been inside of this house for over 30 years. I come today to talk to people, speak about all of the drainage water around our house, in our house, and everywhere in the neighbors. Two years ago, I was with the American rain guard, all street that's happening, our house that's happening, that, uh, whole house was closed after American flood, from Port Leach, Walt's Head, went to dancing. After a week's, we had to try it again. The drainage is digging out the street, it's very important, and 7:05 at the time, it's flat. We called the city for it very numerous times, asking for help, trying, the rains are getting strong, all this time, it's moving. Recently, we called CP King, to try, on the other end. The common branch, lots of them, I guess, well, they're running their Mexican branch. Iran, not completely, you know, wet and sand and, uh, and nothing. That's why we've all had issues. When our house definitely is on fire, some car is back in the street, total house completely damaged. Water was too distant. I have some pictures showing how our street looked like after that. This doesn't look like it's been, it looks like a car. We can move the front doors when you can dry it or something, we just pop it.
We're at the bottom, go next to them. The two houses are at the bottom of, we have eight yards. We can look from our backyard and see. And about 10 years ago, we sat in a rainstorm and bailed our basement. All the water from the whole hill came through our, in the ground pool, into our basement through the two windows. And we thought it was a unique experience, and that was the year FEMA did not give any help for any floods in the city of Waterbury. So as we progress, we've had continued problems, the same street problems, the same problems getting our, the storm drain emptied in front of our street.
Yeah, we've gotten the same storm. The truck's broken.
If you're both going to talk, you're going to have to both just share the microphone because it's not getting picked up.
Same issue with the storm drains. We've called the city. The truck's broken. I'm assuming the city of Waterbury's got a shovel, you know? The storm drain is literally that deep.
I didn't print my pictures.
We've got, we've got a river running between our neighbor's house.
The two yards from the, the grass that they share through our backyard, there is a swamp. I didn't realize how bad their backyard is, but obviously, all three yards across that Dale Avenue are submerged in water. There's some underground stream from the top of the hill, and the guy across from us on Dale unfortunately couldn't be here because he was flooded out two years ago also.
I don't know whether it's spring, underground river, it's got to be someplace for the water to go. Next issue is where, if it, if we can get it to go someplace, it's going to go in those storm drains that are just...
Too old.
Inadequate. They're, they're tiny, they're 18 inches across, 18 inches square, foot and a half deep. They're, they're a joke. Every, I've still got probably six inches of sand in my driveway after they vacuum the storm drain. Next rain, it's going to go right into that storm drain. So I don't know where this water's coming from. Maybe somebody up the hills got, got a hell of a water bill every month. I don't know, because there's just water constantly. So I'm not sure what can be done, but we need, we need to have something.
It's a school rain.
Yes. We've got an in-ground pool. There's so much groundwater, the eight-foot end and a three-and-a-half foot, or two-and-a-half foot end. It was so much groundwater, it raised the liner from underneath. So it was, it was a two-and-a-half foot pool.
So it's not...
There's something wrong.
Yeah, it's a $3,500 repair.
There's something seriously wrong. I don't know where this water's coming from, but it's got to, it's got to find its way someplace other than our yard and our basements. Hopefully to the storm drain, but really, it's got to be found at the source. Until we can figure out where it's coming from...
Is there some way that we can give us some help?
Obviously, it's a neighborhood. It's gotten to this point. And I've been in the house for almost 32 years. I've had this problem for 32 years. You know, I'm surprised I don't have my phone number on record at the, at downtown. It's that time, clean the storm. And anything can be done. We would appreciate it, you know, as a neighborhood, we would appreciate it. And thank you for your time.
Next speaker from 107 Mooreland Avenue, Robert Lopez.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lopez. I live in 107 Mooreland Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06705. I have the same issue that my neighbors have. There's a lot of water. I purchased my home about seven years ago, and the person that sold it to me says like, "You're going to have some water in the backyard, not, not to worry." But it has been progressively getting worse every year that goes by, especially last year with that rain that we had. I lost one-third of my backyard, and I have kids that play back there, and I also have pets, and they come in into the house all muddy and everything because the amount of water that is draining through my backyard into the Mrs. Lopez's property is incredible. And it needs to be, take a look at seriously because as time goes by, the properties are going to deteriorate more. I recently had to replace a trap in my house, and a roto-ruder came over to dig the foundation up, to dig up the pipe, and they found so much water underneath, they had, they had a struggle to actually fix the pipe. And it was because all the water that was running underneath the house that was causing this problem too. So I urge you guys to take a look at it, please, for the neighborhood. We're all having problems. The winter's going to be coming up here soon. There's going to be a lot of ice on the road. There's an accident waiting to happen if we don't do anything right now. Thank you.
Next speaker from 130 Beth Lane, Richard Etique.
Good evening, Richard Etique, 130 Beth Lane. I'm going to try and make this real brief. Beginning of the school year, I was here with a lot of families, behavior therapists for the autism programs in the city of Waterbury school system. We filled these aisles two, three times. I was at Board of Education meetings. Why? Because at the beginning of the school year, an announcement was made by the Board of Education, and it went public. It was on the news, and then it ended up in the newspapers on several occasions. They made an announcement that they wanted to outsource the BT's positions. A BT is a behavioral therapist. This is college-trained. A lot of these folks have, have their PhDs. They've been in the school system for 15, 16, 17 years. My understanding is that before they were here, Waterbury had an outsourced program. So about 15 or 16 years ago, we now start to breed our own program, which has actually put the school system in Waterbury on the map because they have a great autism program. And I'm here because I have a son who's autistic. I can't believe he's going to be 17 next month. Anyways, it's a great program. But there was this thing that came out that said they were going to outsource the positions to save $500,000. Now, when I came into these chambers last, beginning of the school year, before I came, I did a little bit of my homework, and I looked at Mr. Mayor's budget. Okay? At the time, was approximately $158 million, which is 56% of the city budget, was allocated for education. $20 million from the Alliance grant from the state of Connecticut, and there was also approximately another $2.3 million that they were able to maybe grab as well. So we're talking $180 million. So I crunched the numbers. I said, "What percentage is that?" It's like 0.277%. Let's bring it home. That's $65,000 a year income, 0.277%, is 180 bucks. I could blow that on eBay. And we just looked at this and said, "This is discretionary spending. Why do we want to save $500,000 to outsource college-degree people to RBT's?" And an RBT, if you don't know what that is, okay? An RBT is a registered behavioral technician. They're certified by the BCA, by the BACB in the Behavioral Analyst Certification Board. They complete 40 hours of training, and they pass an RBT examination and competency assessment. They have an ongoing certification requirements, an ongoing supervision, again, by the BCBA. And their certifications need to be renewed annually, okay? Problem is, we fought this because they're not, this is outsourced. And outsourcing could bring a little bit of unsettling for these kids because they need study. They need steady people, okay? Well, guess what? The end of this school year, we knew something was wrong because the BT's were coming out. They were coming out the school buses, and they couldn't say anything. We knew something was up. Because of a communication emails that I was having with, with one of the upper people in the program, I learned that they were bringing RBT's in. Our son was supposed to start last week for summer school, and we're so upset, we didn't bring him in.
One minute, Mr. ...
Thank you. We went and brought him to school today, and we met. There's going to be two BT's. Apparently, they're being spread throughout the system. And I met an RBT this morning. We asked her if she had any training. She said, "No." So I don't know if she meant she didn't have her 40 hours yet, but we asked her a real important question. "Do you have physical restraint training?", which the BT's do. "Oh, no, we're not going to get that until the end of August." Really? Our autistic children are in a classroom with a bunch of young RBT's with no experience. She said she had no experience with autistic children. And not, not only that, if one of these kids goes off, they're very strong, somebody can get hurt. They can hurt themselves, hurt another kid, or hurt one of the teachers. There's no training with the RBT's. Maybe the BT's, okay. There's two BT's and a BCBA. This is unacceptable. Thank you.
Next speaker from 229 Westwood Avenue, Sandra Santoro.
Hi. My name is Sandra Santoro, and I live at 229 Westwood Avenue. And we should all about know me by now. This is the fourth time I've been here, and I'm going to keep coming. We have the same exact problem as this, these people over here, and you know that. The only person that showed up to find out what was going on in our neighborhood was Alderman Vernon. Came, looked over the properties, and had a lot to say about what was, what was there. But we have, we did sit down with, with, oh my God, where'd he go? We, thank you. We did sit down with Dave. We had a meeting, the three of us. And Dave did come up with some proposals and did pull some maps, and he's trying, okay? We're still in limbo as to what's going on. I still have a house that's sinking and cracking, and I'm stuck...
After they vacuum the storm drain. Next rain, it's gonna go right into that storm drain. So, I don't know where this water's coming from. Maybe somebody up the hills got a hell of a water bill every month. I don't know, because there's just water constantly. So, I'm not sure what can be done, but we need to have something, yes. We've got an in-ground pool. There's so much groundwater. The eight-foot end and a three-and-a-half foot, or two-and-a-half-foot end. It was so much groundwater, it raised the line from underneath. So, it was a two-and-a-half-foot pool.
So, it's not, yeah, it's a $3,500 repair.
There's something seriously wrong. I don't know where this water's coming from, but it's gotta find its way someplace other than our yard and our basements. Hopefully to the storm drain, but really, it's gotta be found at the source. Until we can figure out where it's coming from.
Is there someone that can give us some help?
Obviously, it's a neighborhood. It's gotten to this point. And I've been in the house for almost 32 years. I've had this problem for 32 years. And I'm surprised I don't have my phone number on record at downtown. And it's that time, clean the storm drain. And anything that could be done, we would appreciate it. As a neighborhood, we would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker from 107 Moreland Avenue, Robert Lopez.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lopez. I live in 107 Moreland Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06705. I have the same issues that my neighbors have. There's a lot of water. I purchased my home about seven years ago. And the person that sold it to me says like, "You're gonna have some water in the backyard, not to worry." But it has been progressively getting worse every year that goes by. Especially last year with that rain that we had. I lost one-third of my backyard. And I have kids that play back there, and I also have pets. And they come in into the house all muddy and everything, because the amount of water that is draining through my backyard into Mrs. Lopez's property is incredible. And it needs to be taken a look at seriously, because as time goes by, the properties are going to deteriorate more. I recently had to replace a trap in my house. And a road roader came over to dig the foundation up, to dig up the pipe. And they found so much water underneath, they had a struggle to actually fix the pipe. And it was because all the water that was running underneath the house, that was causing this problem too. So, I urge you guys to take a look at it, please, for the neighborhood. We're all having problems. The winter's gonna be coming up here soon. There's gonna be a lot of ice on the road. There's an accident waiting to happen if we don't do anything right now. Thank you.
Next speaker from 130 Beth Lane, Richard Etik.
Good evening, Richard Etik, 130 Beth Lane. I'm gonna try and make this real brief. Beginning of the school year, I was here with a lot of families, behavior therapists for the autism programs in the City of Waterbury School System. We filled these aisles two, three times. I was at Board of Education meetings. Why? Because at the beginning of the school year, an announcement was made by the Board of Education, and it went public. It was on the news, and then it ended up in the newspapers on several occasions. They made an announcement that they wanted to outsource the BTs positions. A BT is a behavioral therapist. This is college-trained. A lot of these folks have their PhDs. They've been in the school system for 15, 16, 17 years. My understanding is that before they were here, Waterbury had an outsourced program. So, about 15 or 16 years ago, we now start to breed our own program, which has actually put the school system in Waterbury on the map, because they have a great autism program. And I'm here because I have a son who's autistic. I can't believe he's gonna be 17 next month. Anyways, it's a great program. But there was this thing that came out that said they were gonna outsource the positions to save $500,000. Now, when I came into these chambers last, beginning of the school year, before I came, I did a little bit of my homework, and I looked at Mr. Mayor's budget. Okay, at the time, it was approximately $158 million, which is 56% of the city budget, was allocated for education. $20 million from the Alliance grant from the state of Connecticut. And there was also approximately another $2.3 million that they were able to maybe grab as well. So, we're talking $180 million. So, I crunched the numbers. I said, "What percentage is that?" It's like 0.277%. Let's bring it home. That's $65,000 a year income. 0.277% is 180 bucks. I could blow that on eBay. And we just looked at this and said, "This is discretionary spending. Why do we wanna save $500,000 to outsource college-degree people to RBTs?" And an RBT, if you don't know what that is, okay? An RBT is a registered behavioral technician. They're certified by the BACB in the Behavior Analyst Certification Board. They complete 40 hours of training, and they pass an RBT examination and competency assessment. They have an ongoing certification requirements, an ongoing supervision, again, by the BCBA. And their certifications need to be renewed annually, okay? Problem is, we fought this, because they're not, this is outsourced. And outsourcing could bring a little bit of unsettling for these kids, because they need steady, they need steady people, okay? Well, guess what? The end of this school year, we knew something was wrong, because the BTs were coming out. They were coming out the school buses, and they couldn't say anything. We knew something was up. Because of a communication emails that I was having with one of the upper people in the program, I learned that they were bringing RBTs in. Our son was supposed to start last week for summer school. And we're so upset, we didn't bring him in.
One minute, Mr. President.
Thank you. We went and brought him to school today, and we met. There's gonna be two BTs. Apparently, they're being spread throughout the system. And I met an RBT this morning. We asked her if she had any training. She said, "No." So, I don't know if she meant she didn't have her 40 hours yet. But we asked her a real important question. "Do you have physical restraint training?", which the BTs do. "Oh, no, we're not gonna get that until the end of August." Really? Our autistic children are in a classroom with a bunch of young RBTs with no experience. She said she had no experience with autistic children. And not only that, if one of these kids goes off, they're very strong, somebody can get hurt. They can hurt themselves, hurt another kid, or hurt one of the teachers. There's no training with the RBTs. Maybe the BT is okay. There's two BTs and a BCBA. This is unacceptable. Thank you.
Next speaker from 229 Westwood Avenue, Sandra Santoro.
Hi, my name is Sandra Santoro, and I live at 229 Westwood Avenue. And we should all about know me by now. This is the fourth time I've been here, and I'm gonna keep coming. We have the same exact problem as these people over here, and you know that. The only person that showed up to find out what was going on in our neighborhood was Alderman Vernon. Came, looked over the properties, and had a lot to say about what was there. But we have, we did sit down with, oh my God, where'd he go? We, thank you. We did sit down with Dave. We had a meeting, the three of us. And Dave did come up with some proposals, and did pull some maps. And he's trying, okay? We're still in limbo as to what's going on. I still have a house that's sinking and cracking, and I'm stuck with that. And to be very truthful with you, I don't, this is supposed to be the mayor's city. Where's the mayor? No one came out. He didn't come out. No one, he never reached out to any of us as to what is going on, what can we do? Nothing. Vernon was the only one. I don't know, I don't know where everybody's gonna stand at this point. I don't even wanna be in the city anymore. I see it falling apart, and nobody wants to take responsibility for this. And here we all ended up with properties that are just eroding away. And this was supposed to be an asset that totally went down the drain. So, I'm here. I'm gonna be canvassing all of Bunker Hill, and I'm gonna do two sheets here. One with all the people that are taking in water and have sub pumps, and the other people that are taking in water and have nothing. And I'm gonna be bringing that list in, and I'm going to share it with everybody. And we're gonna see if we can get this straightened out. It's either that, or I'll leave my home. The city can have it. They can't sell it. They can't do anything with it. So, we're asking for more help. They're asking for help. This is the East End. We're at the West End. What are we doing here? I mean, I don't know how this is ever gonna be corrected. But thank you, Vernon, for your time, and thank you for yours.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for item number 10 on your agenda, the approval for the contract for the field turf for the football field, the municipal stadium. I believe that it's time for us to finally get this last leg done at the stadium. You know, our new locker rooms and bathrooms have been a success. They've been completed on time, to my account. I believe they were done two weeks ahead of schedule. You know, that's just a testament to Mark Lombardo and this administration. You know, when you get the right people in the room working on this project, I think that the contractor himself should be commended, I think that the contractor himself should be commended, because he was there every single day, that we get this field done. I know that we've, this field, I believe, was put in when I was in high school. That was in 2002. I know that they have patched spots that have deteriorated. I think it's time that we finish this off and give our children and the city the park that they so desperately need. I know the high schools are excited with this new locker room and the facilities. Let's get this football field done, and let's get this stadium back to the original shape that it was, a world-class stadium in the City of Waterbury. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, May 24, 2019. Alderman Brunelli.
Mr. President, I think that's a typo. It's supposed to be June 24, 2019. Motion approved the minutes at a regular meeting for Monday, June 24, 2019. So moved.
Second. Motion having been made, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion or any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. The mayor is not here this evening, but we do have a section on this agenda for the mayor's report. The mayor's chief of staff is here this evening, Mac DeMac, and he does have some information relative to these issues with the water. So, we're gonna have him just talk a little bit about what they know and what they're trying to do to resolve it. So, Mac.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the board. Would also like to thank our constituents who came out and shared with us their serious concerns about the well-being of what, for many people, is their greatest investment, not only for themselves, but also their families. Would also like to invite to the podium the city's director of public works, David Simpson. So, just wanted to clarify for you, Mr. President. At the conclusion of our last Board of Aldermen meeting, Mayor O'Leary, who was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors at the time, designated me as his chief of staff to meet with the families, which was done directly afterwards after the meeting. We then proceeded to meet the next day, or not, we didn't meet the next day, spoke with each member that appeared at the meeting the previous night, connected with them, let them know that I'd be touching base with the director of public works, the city's engineer, Paul Belagamba, and told them that I would get back to them after inquiring with the aforementioned parties, you know, what was going on. I'll have Dave go a little bit more into the findings of the report commissioned by the Bureau of Engineering. But also wanted to clarify that last Monday, here at City Hall, Dave Leepore, advisor to the mayor, behalf of the mayor, as well as Paul Belagamba, Dave Simpson, met with the affected constituency. Mayor O'Leary's office and the city continues to look to see what can be done. And we continue to be here as a resource and a supportive network for all of Waterbury. Thank you.
And does that include both neighborhoods? I know last week, we were just, it was just the Bunker Hill neighborhood that was here last meeting. Is this new information with the East End, or is that something that you?
So, there are some new constituents that have arisen tonight and spoke. There were, I believe, three constituents that appeared at the last meeting, met with them directly after the meeting, spoke with them the next day, spoke with them the following week, and then this past Monday, a meeting was held here at City Hall. So, part of-
So, that was this, they happen to be sitting on this side tonight as opposed to the East End?
Yeah, Sandra and Peter, you know, met and spoke with. Dave, would you be able to share some of the details about the report?
Thank you, David Simpson, Director of Public Works. So, when we speak with the Westwood-Devonwood area, yes, I have spoken with many neighbors, three of which are here tonight, some that are not. There are some individuals that we have spoken with. There are some genuine concerns, but I, quite honestly, I can't say that the city can alleviate all of those. There are some, and there's some communication with upper property owners from the Devonwood side, up on the hill. It's all ledge up there. So, we have looked at each piece of property. Back in April, I sent engineering staff out that looked at a number of those homes, from Sandra's to the dead-end part of Westwood, to Mr. O'Brien, further down Westwood, and Peters at 229 Devon. We continue to look at the different options that we have for that, but don't have an answer tonight for you as to what we could do as municipality.
Okay.
If I can, Mr. President, you're, the concern on the Maryland Avenue avenue, it may be in our Q Alert system. This is the first I'm hearing that there are such serious problems, and we'll reach out to those folks tomorrow. My engineering staff may have it. It hasn't gotten to my desk, but it has now. So, we'll address it, and we'll get back to them. City engineer, Paul Belagamba, is on vacation this week, but I have staff that can go out and do inspections.
And then, can we maybe just have, we don't meet again for a month into August. Maybe we can just have you come back and let us know where things, what things look like by then?
Absolutely.
Perfect, and we'll put something on the agenda. Thank you. Thanks, Mac. Okay, with that, you should have in front of you, and item add-on is number 13 to be referred to the Finance Committee. This is a release of a public assistance lien. There is some information that still needs to be provided, some satisfactions that have to be made, but because we're not meeting again for a month, this house is slated to close prior to that. So, we'll add it as 13, refer to the Finance Committee, and the request would be to approve it, subject to the corp counsel holding it in escrow until all of the conditions are satisfied. Effectively, the lien is paid off, at which case it would be given to the sellers and the buyers at the closing at that point. So, go to the Finance Committee. So, unless, I would entertain a motion at this point to add that as item number 13 and refer to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made, and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries, the items added as a new business, number 13, refer to the Finance Committee. With that, we will recess into committees. We'll begin with Intergovernmental and then go to Finance. Thank you.
Thank you. I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee for Monday, July 15, 2019. Item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following three resolutions relative to the Bunker Hill School Elevator Project. Number one, resolve that the Board of Aldermen authorizes the Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the proposed Bunker Hill Elevator Project. Number two, resolve that the proposed Bunker Hill Elevator Project is hereby assigned to the Board of Education's School Building Committee, Catherine N. Awad, Karen E. Harvey, Charles E. Pagano, Ann M. Sweeney, and Jason Van Stone. Number three, resolve that the Board of Aldermen authorizes the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed Bunker Hill School Elevator Project as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. I don't see anyone here from the Board of Ed. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Will Clark, Chief Operating Officer, Board of Ed.
Thank you, good to see you. So, I have a question that you may or may not have an answer to, but I still wanna kinda ask if it's possible. And it is regards with the second part of the resolution, which is essentially stating that by approving the grant application process, we're also approving and empowering, once either the grant is accepted or rejected, that the Board of Education School Building Committee handles this. My question to you is, this is the first time I've seen anything so specific. Is there, is there, is there a special reason why this is being, you know, conducted in this matter?
Two things. One, the requirement of DAS to file these projects and seek a portion of state reimbursement requires that in advance, you have the local approval. In other words, you're giving the approval of the Board of Ed side and the Board of Aldermen side to proceed with the projects. Then, we make the application, and they will either grant or deny it, or have their issues with it. So, this is a condition precedent for us putting in the application. So, that's one. It's just a procedural element of it. With respect to, I think, the point of your question, we are still obligated to follow the procurement rules and policies. So, we'll be back. In fact, the current, we're doing four projects right now, elevator projects, and it was the same exact resolution that you approved a few years ago for those projects. And all of those projects, we came back and went through the procurement process, out to bid and so forth. And ultimately, have those approvals, in fact, have the contract associated with those four projects is proceeding through our Board of Education right now. So, a similar, or in fact, the same process would be followed here. And I could certainly make that representation to this board. I've made that representation to corp counsel, who work with purchasing and so forth, to go through that project. And as you likely recall, these two projects, the funding has already been put in place. This board has approved that. So, that's another condition precedent. We have to show the Department of Administrative Services that we have secured the money. We have secured the approvals. So, essentially, that's what this is doing. We get in the queue, we make the application to state, and then we'll come back, once that approval comes from them, to go through the specifications and bidding and all those sorts of things.
Okay, so you clarify, you perfectly my question. So, as a following, any procurement, any approval of contracts, any approval of spending will definitely be given to us through here, authorized through here?
We will be back, and we'll go through the procurement process, just like we did for the last four elevations.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number six. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following three resolutions relative to the Washington School Elevator Project. Number one, resolve that the Board of Aldermen authorizes the Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject the grant for the proposed Washington School Elevator Project. Number two, resolve that the proposed Washington School Elevator Project is hereby assigned to the Board of Education's School Building Committee, Catherine N. Awad, Karen E. Harvey, Charles E. Pagano, Ann M. Sweeney, and Jason Van Stone. Number three, resolve that the Board of Aldermen authorizes the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed Washington School Elevator Project as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education.
I move to approve item number six as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number seven. Your Board of Aldermen, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the construction contract with Dayton Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $499,490 for the John G. Gilmarten Elementary School Safe Roots to the school project as submitted by Paul M. Belagamba, P.E., City Engineer, Bureau of Engineer, DPW.
I move to approve item number seven as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Alderman Matthews.
This is for the sidewalks that they're supposed to be putting in around the school?
Yes, Salvatore Porzio, project manager, DPW. Yes, this is in the Gilmarten area. It's programmed to improve sidewalks, to make walking the school safer.
Yeah, because I was at a meeting a few weeks ago, and apparently, some of the people were asking, myself and another Alderman, to find out when it was going to happen, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Engineering Services Agreement with ATA&amp;E Engineers PC in the amount of $83,740 for construction, administration, and resident engineer inspection services for the John G. Gilmarten Elementary School Safe Roots to School Project as submitted by Paul M. Belagamba, P.E., City Engineer, Bureau of Engineering, DPW.
I move to approve item number eight as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 10. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the- Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the contract with Field Turf USA, Inc., in the amount of $650,000 for the turf replacement at Municipal Stadium. Funding source for this contract is the improvement of Municipal Stadium Bond Authorization as submitted by Mark Lombardo, Acting Deputy of Public Works, DPW.
I move to approve item number 10 as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you. Hey, Mark, how's it going?
Good.
I just have a question. Normally, we get the -- I read that there were several bids, correct?
There were proposals. This was an RFP.
Okay. So if I go back to the -- just make sure that I read what I read, that I'm not going crazy here. All right. So the third paragraph, it says on May 2nd, 2019, bids were open. So that's -- I missed -- that's --
I apologize for that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any further discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Good evening. I would like to call the Finance Committee to order. First item on the agenda, item number nine. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the release of a public assistance lien at 19 Ashford Street as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, any discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that can answer questions to this topic? Thanks, Mike. This is the first time I recall seeing something like this, so I'm not familiar with it. It was -- is it common for us to have liens on homes from the '80s and the '70s on the item 13 that was added?
It is from the standpoint that, you know, that far back, when the assistance was provided, it was protocol to record liens associated with the assistance that had been provided, and it stays on the books, if you will, until it's addressed in the case in these type instances when they're looking for a release of a lien. We do have files that identify if there are amounts due to be repaid, and in that, in those situations, the assistance has to be satisfied for the lien release.
So we're satisfied that item nine is, there is a zero balance on, according to?
Right. For that one, it's gone through the process. The one that you're going to take up later this evening, that process still hasn't been completed.
I would just add that public assistance, city public assistance stopped in the '90s. So that's when the process switched over to state. The state would be doing it.
Okay.
The city no longer does it.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, item number 11. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the agreement between Take-Two, Inc., in the amount of $0 for the disposal recycling of computer and other electronic waste as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, project manager, Bureau of Engineer, DPW.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, item number 12. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the agreement with PoliceApps.com at no cost to the city. The software application specifically devised to allow towns and municipalities to process applications for the entry-level position of police officer in an automated environment as submitted by Scott P. Morgan, Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Last item on the agenda, item number 13. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the release of public assistance lien at 253 Wood Street as submitted by Attorney Don DeSantis, Office of Corporate Counsel. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, any discussion? Alderman Sherman?
We are just passing this under the guise that it will only take effect if we have a zero balance.
Right. So you -- we laid out that you have the authority to make the adjustment, but it came in either Friday or this morning to us, so we weren't able to confirm the amount. So we'll hold it in escrow until closing, and if it's paid off, we'll release it. If it's not paid off, the lien will stay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So... The Standing Committee respectfully recommends that the refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $9,927.25 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn.
And with that, we will return to the regular order of business. Following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one, two, three, and four are all receiving placed on file. Item number five is on consent to approve the three resolutions relative to the Bunker Hill School Elevator Project. Item number six is on consent to approve the three resolutions relative to the Washington School Elevator Project. Item number seven is on consent to approve a construction contract with Dayton Construction Company in the amount of $400,490 for the John G. Gil Martin Elementary School Safe Routes to School Project. Item eight is on consent to approve an engineering services agreement with Atene Engineers in the amount of $83,740 for construction administration and resident engineer inspection services for the Gil Martin Elementary School Safe Routes Project. Item number nine is on consent to approve a release of public assistance lien for 19 Ashford Street. Item 10 is on consent to approve a contract with Field Turf USA in the amount of $650,000 for turf replacement at Municipal Stadium. The funding source is the improvement of Municipal Stadium Bond Authorization. Item 11 is on consent to approve an agreement with Take-Two, Inc., in the amount of $0 for the disposal recycling of computer and other electronic waste. Item number 12 is on consent to approve an agreement with the PoliceApps.com at no cost to the city. The software application to allow towns and municipalities to process applications for entry-level position of police officer in an automated environment. And item number 13 is on consent to approve a request for release of public assistance lien at 235 Wood Street, Waterbury, subject to the payoff of the outstanding lien amount to the satisfaction of the Corporation Council to be held in escrow until that time. With that, I would entertain a motion with respect to the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved as read. With that, the chair would recognize Alderman Cotto as chair of the Finance Committee for Standing Committees.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers presenting overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $9,927.25 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso, CCMC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kula, seconded by Alderman Weaver. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, and the refund is approved. With that, we're out of agenda items. Is there anything for the good of the order? Hearing none. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, Alderman Matthews?
I just wanted to get some clarification on a article that was in Friday's paper. I was misquoted, and that's all I'm going to say about it. It was a misquote, so that's all I'm going to hear about it.
Anything else for the good of the order? Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. We'll see you in a month.